Workshop, the session on January 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. This is a Zoom meeting. The agenda is Call to Water, Pledge of Allegiance, President to Speak, and then we will review the programs that we previously presented at the last special meeting. And then we would just be discussing problem three, which is Special Education, Program Five, which is Health Services, Program Six, which is Program for Curriculum, Staff Development, and Program Seven, which is Utility Utilities Review, and Program Ten, Fringe Benefits. So we have quite an agenda there, but I think we'll get through it smoothly.
We will.
The next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would like to stand, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is President to Speak. Speakers will be recognized by the chairman to identify themselves or herself by name and address and proceed with his or her comments. All persons will be limited to five minutes. The total time allotted generally is about 20 minutes. And also, at the discretion of the board, may not address specific personnel matters or individuals. Just speak to the issues. I don't have a listing of President to Speak, but do we have anyone on there?
Just Melissa McKinnon that joined us tonight. So Melissa, if you have anything. She's shaking her head no. We're all set her, she was it.
Okay, this is the only opportunity the President to speak on our budget this evening. Item four on our agenda is a review of programs previously presented and Board of Education discussion on those particular issues. And that was Hall School and Center School, which were the two of the major areas. I suppose I could kick off with just one little item. The budget seems to be pretty good. We're right around the 3% range. The overall budget is about $9,127,000. So that we have an increase of, I guess, what is it? So that most of the increases were presented last time. The only area that I had a concern about, Phil, and I always have it, I guess, is in the textbook area. I don't know whether students are using textbooks in their schools or they're not, because we never have any textbooks coming before us for review and approval and that type of thing, according to policy. But the textbook figure, if I'm correct, is very low and it's out of a $9 million budget. It seems like we're changing that particular area. We don't even have 1%. It's up in the thousands of a percent that we're spending in that particular year. I don't have the exact dollar, but it's probably about $5,000 or $6,000, maybe $6,000. Not including the library periodicals and stuff like that. But that's one of my main concerns concerning the budget. There are others, but I'll leave that on the table for now. Okay. Anyone else have a comment or question?
Elena has her hand raised.
Who is that?
Elena.
Yes, I have a question to Bill, or to Bill to Phil, sorry. I was talking the whole day. As I understand, medical insurance premiums last year, we really did not increase anything because we over budgeted the year before. But do we have a number? Can you tell us a number how much they increased last year and the year before? Like maybe two, three years increase for the medical insurance premiums?
Yep, when we get to that tonight, I can definitely share that with you. I don't know that I have two or three years, but I can definitely go through when we talk about that program. We'll talk about that for sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other board member have a comment or a question?
Donna has a comment. Okay, so one of my concerns is that we're spending over $22,000 per pupil to educate them. With all that is going on, and I understand that most of our budget, we don't have any say over. It is contractual and it is what it is. But we also need to be cognizant of what's going on in the rest of our town and just keep that in mind. So we don't just think that a 3% may not sound like a lot. But with the state of Connecticut saying that people that own homes worth more than $300,000, are going to get hit with extra tax and with the number of our residents that are needing to take advantage of the food pantry and the fuel bank and things like that. I just want us to remember that we're not only doing this for the kids, but a lot of those kids live in homes that are really hurting too. So I just like us to keep that in mind. We want them well educated, but we also, you know.
Donna, where did you get your $22,000?
I took the new budget, proposed budget of the 9,127,050. And if you divide it by 412, which is what Phil said, if all the homeschool students came back, that would be our estimated enrollment. I got 22,153. If I divide it by 397, which is the projected class size on page eight, we get $22,990.
Yeah, the state puts out a list of the cost. I don't know if everything that you've included in there is included in that figure. It's usually about 18,500, I think.
Well, then we're over the average. If the average for the state is 18,000, and I don't know what those numbers are. I'm just going by page five and page eight.
Yeah, it seems on, it could be that figure, right? It seems a little high. I know town, small towns like Union and places like that, their costs for students are very high. But I thought we were less, but that's okay. It's a good point.
I can get the, Donna, it's a little weird how they do the calculations too. I can pull the calculation from the state and try and use that to determine with this increased budget, what it would look like next year.
I'm confused. I'm just taking what you're saying the proposed budget is and dividing it by the number of students you said we had.
I agree. The issue is if the actual per pupil doesn't use that formula at the state level. That's what's, that's what's a little weird.
Yeah.
Oh, well, they're doing funky math and.
They're trying to get apples to match apples so that you're not comparing districts in a way that's unfair. So it is a warped formula though. I do agree with you.
Donnie's point is actually, it's probably an actual. Laura has her hand up.
Okay, Laura.
Laura Rodriguez. So yeah, just to kind of speak to that point, what Herb was saying, smaller districts, we've got more overhead with less pupils. So the fact that we have smaller class sizes is great, but we still have a building and all of those expenses that, you know, figure into when you just do a straight division. Oh shoot, there was a second thing that I wanted to talk about and I knew was going to go to my head. I meant to write it down. I'm sorry, somebody else go, it'll come back to me. Oh, I know what it was. I know what it was, the 3% increase. Because, you know, we see or I've seen over many, many years with the finance, Board of Finance wants zero, they always want zero. But I think we have to realize that zero is negative, that if we want to retain what we have, 3% ends up actually being kind of flat, that's keeping our programs. So it's, it's, it's an increase from last year, but it's actually, it's like we're always running to keep up because prices increase. So, you know, I just, I just kind of wanted to put that out there, that 3% is really just keeping even. It's, it's not, it's not really increasing anything. That's it.
As the cost of the pandemic, even though a lot of it is being reimbursed by the state feds, is that, has that had an impact on our budget anywhere?
To this point, for the most part, no, because we've gotten such a significant amount of money. But we don't know, and we got an email just the other day that said, you know, there's, there's supposed to be, I think it was 490 million that came to the state of Connecticut. And what we heard was the process is stalled. There's supposed to be an additional allotment. And what I'll tell you is, and we do this as we go, right? We offset with grants. So there's, we had an ESER grant. It was the first grant we had. And it was $60,000 and it was all connected to Corona. And then we had about 240,000 that came in the coronavirus relief funds. But we're supposed to get an ESER two. And what we've told, we don't, I don't know what the number is. All I can tell you was what I know so far is I was told it's not going to be the same amount we got the first time, it is going to be significantly more. I will believe it when I see it, as, you know, just because of the way that some of this works. But if we got $60,000 the first time around and we get close to that again, you could pay for a good portion of those utility staff that are in the budget. And that would offset this budget. And I think that's what the target would be, is to use it for those folks if we need them. And that would bring the cost of this budget down. And again, it's directly related to Corona, right? It's not related to anything else. We're not going to continue those, the employment of those individuals once the coronavirus is, I don't want to say gone, but at a point where we can continue forward without those folks needing the additional cleaning and coverage and all the things they do. So there could be some significant savings there. At this point though, I have not, and I'll use the word padded. I have not padded this budget at all, not one bit. The only thing that I've put in here is those utility staff. And that is the core of what we need for, when it comes to implementing our mitigation strategies that we have in school. You're going to also hear when I get to the program tonight, that's with the nurses in it. I didn't increase their, you know, put any increases in their, in their supplies. Because I, we've done very well. And I think we're going to continue with that. And knowing that there's additional grant funding coming, we'll see what that number looks like. I was confident that leaving that flat was safe, so.
The custodial has been increased slightly, I don't think.
Correct, and the items in the custodial piece.
Impact us.
Yeah, there may be some additional, I'll be honest with you, some of the increases that we've seen in the custodial range, if they're there, the cost of some of these items has just skyrocketed. Not all items. For whatever reason, right now, the gloves, we are, we go through a lot of gloves and for our custodians and people cleaning, and that cost has just gone through the roof. They've, it's more than doubled. We were, we were spending about $12 a box in the past, I think it was. And the last price I saw was 28. And I just, it's, that's crazy. I was glad to hear on the news last night that they were looking at price gouging because that's one area that I think that that price is just, it's out of this world.
Now, another area too is our diesel oil and gasoline and things like that. Is that a fixed cost there? Because there's a lot of turmoil going on in the oil business, the gasoline and, and all of that energy stuff. And it looks like the turmoil, the impact is going to force prices of fuel oil and things like that.
We're locked.
Are we guaranteed the prices that we talked about on the transportation?
Yes, we are, and that's going to be in the utility section tonight. Our rates are locked and they're tremendous. Anne and Elena both have their hands up.
Okay, Anne.
I just wanted to make some clarifications about the enrollments. On page eight, the 2122 numbers, does that include all of the kids who are out being homeschooled? I'm assuming the virtual kids are in there, but does it also include the kids that are being homeschooled this year?
So the number that's in the actual, in the grid, Anne, is what we currently have. I cannot, that's my, that's my reporting. So that's the number that gets reported to the state October 1st. And then our actual on 111, so homeschool students are not in that. And that's why in the text I had said, you know, if those, all those homeschoolers come back, and that's where Donna referenced the number 412 before, that's what our number would be at, would be 112.
Very good, because I'm a little leery. I noticed on our page, if we do need to cut, we have two classroom teachers, which would lead to some pretty big classes. I think we were really fortunate this year that we had such small class sizes, which enabled us to come back full time on day one, rather than having to go hybrid. But when you get into those, let's say we do have to continue some of this into the fall. You know, when you get up into the twenties, then you're looking at the possibility of having to go hybrid to make enough space in the classroom for the children.
Correct, and that's the risk. So when we, when we, this summer, and I'm not kidding when I say this, I went on numerous occasions to both schools to measure rooms, to look at different setups. And we know, you know, the Pediatrics Academy, that National Organization was saying the minimum was three feet. Everybody else was asking for a minimum of six feet or as best you could, is what they said, because they realized classroom sizes are, you know, depending on the room and the size of the classroom. And where between, we were like five feet is what was our, you know, if we could hit five feet, we were hitting a decent number. We couldn't get, and Donna Cook and I were talking about this too. She had called to ask me a question about this. We couldn't really get more than 19 in a room, in a classroom. And really that's applied to center school. It may be one more at Hall. And that's like desks, nothing else in the room, a table at the front for the teacher and desks lining the room. So if you start hitting those higher numbers, I think the teachers, number one, the unions would come out and say, look, is this something that, you know, is going to move us to into a hybrid? If that exists in the fall, which I do think it will exist. So, and I still do not know, we're still waiting for questions about is remote learning going to be an option in the fall? That has not been identified. We asked again from our superintendent's group and we still haven't got a response. And it might be the vacancy at the state from a commissioner's standpoint.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Elena has her hand up.
Elena?
I just have a question, something which I just don't understand. As I see from the numbers from page five, we have a significant reduction in heating fuel cost this year, significant comparing with last year, hardly any reduction. Diesel, diesel fuel costs significantly reduced. Electricity is a huge difference in price. Plus, we have only one, no, only two out of district placement instead of three last year. So as I look at it, I see it's like all opportunities for us somewhere to see noticeable reducing the budget and they don't see it. So that's why I would like to understand. I'm not saying something is wrong, I just would like to understand. If you're planning to show it later during the meeting, it's okay. It's just I wanted you to know, I'd like to see it.
No, that's a great question, and that's why I put that on there as the snapshot. Because some things we find savings on and other things, the prices go up. So I try and highlight a little bit of both of what, where we get stuck. And so, you know, two, one outplacement could cost more than five, depending on the outplacement. So we're going to talk about where the, you know, with, you'll go through the majority of the programs tonight. You're going to start to see some programs that are flat. You'll see a program tonight that's under where it was. You're going to see some programs that are higher. And one of the things I'm going to show you tonight is, is you're going to see why you know, decrease someplace, because one of the increases that we are hit with next year, and we were actually quite frankly hit with some of it this year as well, is on a special ad. And it's, you know, we talk about controlling what we can control. You're going to see it tonight where one of the items that's really a challenge for us to control. So yes, that will be answered tonight, I promise that.
Okay, anyone else?
Herb, could I just take a second? I asked Donna Letinsic to join us tonight. And Donna, I think I have to unmute you. Donna's the business manager, and so, you know, in talking to several members of the board when they had questions about the budget, one of the things that's hard, and there was a shift prior to my arrival here, going to these 10 programs, and not in getting away from line items and looking at really specific lines and trying to understand why we do it by programs. What you don't see, the details behind what you don't see. I wanted Donna to talk about it because she's, it's almost like, you know, when I present this picture to you in a program, I want you to understand how we're looking at it and how we're double checking it and why it's hard to give you just lines behind it, because multiple lines are added up. So Donna, can you, I don't know if you're, you can hear?
Yes, I can hear. So the programs tell a budget story and we back up the programs with line items in the budget. But the line items are grouped together by category, by object code. And you wouldn't be able to, if you had all of the line items in front of you, be able to match them to what Phil has in his budget without having a crosswalk to see what all of the objects are included in that one category. So I think that having the programs help to tell the budget story.
Yeah, and so one of the things Donna and I talked about was, you know, when you see a larger number or one line, there's sort of very few things in the budget document are standalone items in one line in the budget. There's several items that are presented as one line, but in our backup and Donna's backup in that crosswalk and trying, might be 10 or 11 different things. So it's hard to share that with you. And that's why we tried to do the budget story, and that was the intent of going through the 10 programs. Because it, and I think when Jackie, Dr. Jacoby did this, it was really to try and make more sense of what's there. But we can back up every single one of these. So when we do this budget, she has the backup. I give her my files of what we're looking for. She aligns them to different programs. You know, one of the things that, and I'm not sure if this budget document, and even really Laura, you're new. If this budget document gives you the picture you're looking for. In the past, and this is in the David Harding years, he used to do a pie graph and give you a sense of this much of the pie graph is staffing. This much of the pie graph is benefits. And then this much of the pie graph, and he'd go through and break it out by object. I don't know if that's something that, I don't want to ask Donna to do something as a business manager who is shared and is doing multiple budgets here. I don't know if that's something that's helpful to people or if it's something that is just going to be busy work for her. So if it's something helpful, helpful to you, I guess that's Donna, if you want to chime into that too.
When I was asking the question, one of the things I was trying to get a better picture of, I mean, there are certain things that it doesn't matter where our kids are taught. You know, whether they're at Hall or Center, a new building, some combination. You know, like the teacher salaries are going to be the teacher salary. That's not going to be impacted. But now that the building committee has started meeting, and I went to the first meeting and I was sent, and they have some really talented people on the committee. But I think it would be helpful to understand what we are spending on our current buildings. And some, and with enough detail to know that what's going to stay and what's going to go away. I mean, if an annual fire inspection is required of every building, then if we go to one building, the school board would only have one fire inspection. But that doesn't mean that if the town takes over Center School and uses it for office building, that that, they wouldn't have a fire inspection there. I mean, that's, I'm just trying to use a real simple superficial kind of example. But I think it's helpful to understand what's in it so that you can see where there might be savings if the next step is taken. So it may not impact how we make our budget decisions now for this year, but I think it's going to be very important information for that building committee to have and to understand. And that's why I wanted, the way it is now, it's good to know how much we spend at Center, how much we spend at Hall, but I don't think we get a total picture of what we're spending on certain things.
I got your point down 100% now, I didn't get that before, thank you. That's definitely going to be a target of that, that committee. And it's, you are all going to have to be part of that conversation. Because, you know, when you start saying, look, if we ever go to one building here, what goes away? And you need to have a fairly accurate list because then you need to, number one, eliminate it from your budget when you do budget again. And number two, you need to know what, you know, what programs you're going to maintain. What, you know, the fire alarm is a great example, you know, what's not going to be in the Board of Education budget anymore, which is what you're responsible for. So there is a, what I'm going to call a real draft of a list. And it's over $500,000 easily, over $500,000. It's staffing, it's some of those annual inspections. It's, you know, just, just the inspections alone. You know, you start looking at all of those things that are duplicated, it's, there's a lot. Marcia and I talked the other day about special education, that if you're in one building and you have, do you need as many case managers? Do you need as many pair of professionals? Because you're operating on one schedule, it's easier to share services. And so Donna, that's a great point. All, we can definitely get to that, and I know the building committee is going to have to. Because they're going to want to know, okay, if we, if they recommend building something, they're going to want to know the estimated cost to taxpayers and what the offset would be in the annual budget. And the annual budget is obviously, you only see the savings once, that first year, but it's significant. So very good point though.
But we don't, on the budget that we have, Phil, we don't have a list, we have a line item.
Correct.
But, but you have, and I know you probably have under that a listing of everything that's in that line item.
Correct.
As a board, I don't know whether we want to get into the nitty gritty of each item under each category.
Yeah, and there's a lot of lines, and I will tell you.
Micro managing your budget and. Micro managing your budget and we would we would have to and lots of times we're not. We're not able to determine whether certain equipment is necessary.
What they are. Yeah, I and I guess, you know, I always appreciate those questions, though, because. I want to make sure you can make informed decisions and that you have the information you need. And so, you know, once I appreciate that because. You know, I want to make sure what you have in front of you and even if we need to I need to collect some more data or shuffle it so you can see a big picture. Like what does the entire staff cost in the district? I can pull that information. Uh. But when it comes to some of the lines, it gets really gray because it's built by program. So. Donna, um, Lettinsick, do you have anything you want to add to that? I I think I think we've answered that.
Thank you, Phil. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna. Have a good night.
Bye, folks.
Bye. Bye. Thank you.
Any other questions on those pr- uh, previous programs, one, two, four?
If not, we can always come back to them at another meeting.
Correct.
They're on all on the table. Okay, so are we ready to move on to item five on the agenda, which is Program Three? The Special Education and Related Services Review. And boards after Phil's presentation.
So, uh, Marc McGinley is here tonight as a People's Services Director, Special Ed Director. Um, I'm not going to have her go over her her overview. Uh, but if you turn to page twenty six, that's where her instructional summary is. It talks a lot about special education, the process. I always find that there's there's so many acronyms in in education. I think it's important for you to understand definitions and that's why um Marsha did a definitions page for you on page twenty seven. Herb, do you want her to give a quick snapshot of the special ed process or would you like me to just to jump in?
I'll let her do it if you like it.
So Marsha, if you just want to give a quick, you know, high level view of how we build the budget, what types of things are in there and why? Um. And then I can go through the numbers.
Okay, so you know, I we really look at um all of our individual students' needs. Um, there are certain certain needs that um, you know, we do have costs that we have to, we have to address. Um. So that's taken into consideration. You know, I focus highly on the students who are um who are requiring replacements. Um. This year, we did have to focus highly on students who are attending magnet schools. Who have special education services. It's our responsibility to, um, you know, provide. The the support, funding and oversight for those students and their special ed services. Um, I spend a lot of time really looking at our transportation needs for our students. And um, I mean, those are kind of the you'll see as we go through the the major line items um that, you know, do affect the budget. Um. So I think, you know, as we go through, I'm happy to answer more specific questions. So I hope that that kind of is an overview, Phil.
Yeah, it is. And 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 we'll we'll jump right in because you're I want you to speak to the teacher first. So. When you look at Program Three, everyone on page fourteen. Um. And we look at staffing that's on there. This is the, these are the folks that we need. To be able to operate our special education program legally, right? So we have to meet. Uh, every student's I IEP, their individualized education plan. So there's an administrator, there's an administrator because Marsha attends all of those meetings. She's responsible to attend attend those meetings. And um she goes to all the IEP meetings, PPTs. Um, the number of teachers there from from twenty twenty one to twenty one twenty two, you can see there's a point four increase. And so Marsha and I had several conversations around this. And I just want her to talk about the. You know, as as we talk about student needs, Marsha, what's the what the increase there for? And it's really two days a week is what we're looking at or about that number of hours.
So, you know, I spent a lot of time really looking at how our uh special ed populations are going to change in both buildings for next year. We're going to see more of an increase in needs at uh Hall Memorial School next year. Uh, the caseloads are going to be higher and the needs are going to be very specific next year. We have students who have high level needs, um especially focusing on reading intervention, um dyslexia. Who need a very specialized individualized program. Um. So, you know, it's. Taking into consideration our students' needs, um I feel that it is very important that. We do have that additional staffing to be able to support all of our students. Um, you know, just looking at, uh, you know, just. Can't. It's hard to look at caseload sizes because you don't want to just take into consideration the number of students who are being served. Because you really have to look at the individual needs of each student. Um. So we have to provide some more specialized instruction. Um. That's going to increase, you know, the demands of um. What the teachers are going to need to do for next year.
Just like with paraprofessionals, if we have um students move in with that with significant needs. We may need to hire somebody. And so, you know, when Marsha looks at all of those. Those I'm going to wicked echo. Is anybody else getting that echo?
Yes.
I'm going to just. Can I mute everybody except for myself? Herb, is that okay? Or you want to mute yourselves? And then I can just, if you raise your hand, just to see if it changes it.
Just make sure that when we're waving, you see us and.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't unmute ourselves.
I have a, you know what I'll do? Um, we don't have, hold on. I just rechecked it. We only have one member of the public participating. So I just changed the setting so you'll be able to unmute yourself. So if everybody can uh mute yourselves. That way, that's better. Okay. So um what I was saying is, as that changes. Um, basically what happens is 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 the population changes. We end up having to to gain staff as the population, if if the number of special ed students goes down. Um, you know, we adjust to that. And in this case. You know, Marsha and I are are recommending the increase. Um. And and that's why the additional point for teacher there. So again, it's it's it it could be seen as two days a week. Um. But it could be, we could stretch that out. It depends on, um, you know, it's a good, it's a shortage area. We'll see what we can find. Uh, obviously, it has to go through. When you look at the other teachers that are in there, the point zero six and point five eight, those are not actually. Um, point zero six and point five eight. What they are is that portion of that person's salary is offset by a grant. Okay, the point zero six of the preschool teacher is paid for by that um by the the IDA grant. And then the certified IDA B grant, that point six five, that amount is offset by a um grant as well. All right. It says again, one point two five secretaries. It's because a portion of. Um, other of other building secretaries. So Penny is the one, but then uh out of center school. Uh, there's a portion that is uh the front office there. That's her point two five. Uh, you can see last year, if you look at paraprofessionals, it says twenty five and then right below it, um contracted one. So we had twenty six and and that's considering this year what we budgeted for. And next year, you can see the twenty three point eight, one point two that we're budgeting for one last. And again, this is. We budget based upon need, um not on want, okay? And so there's a shift in a need for paraprofessionals to hall. And that's why also the increase for the teacher there. So this goes to eleven paraprofessionals at center. And fourteen at hall. Remember, some students have a one to one paraprofessional. Which would be identified in their individual education plan. Others just receive support in class. It could be, you know, there could be a a classroom where there's one paraprofessional. For four students that rotates between those four. Um. That would be an academic support kind of model. Um. Anything you want to add, Marsha, about the staffing? And you're muted. Okay, good, perfect. Any questions? I'm just looking up for a second. And, okay, perfect. All right. So as far as salaries, you can see their salaries there, the cost. I'm sure the one that's going to jump out at you is the paraprofessionals. Um. And the reason it jumps out at you is there's a big increase there of a hundred and forty one thousand and I've highlighted this on several occasions now. Is that. Marsha and I um at some point last year, I think it was, or maybe even earlier than that. Looked at the cost of what we were getting from from uh outside purchase services, meaning a crack. Um, or in East Con and the cost of that professional. And we thought, um, we had a lot of evidence pointing towards it was going to be um. Less expensive for the district to hire those folks into our uh W E S S support staff. And we've been right. Um. And this is another example. So if you look at that, yes, it went up a hundred and forty one thousand. But if you go down to the under the purchase service line. And you go all the way down to paraprofessionals where it says one crack and three East Con. That's gone down two hundred and three thousand dollars. There's a savings there of sixty two thousand dollars. There it is a little bit lower than sixty two thousand dollars. I I and I'm going to tell you because of insurance and other factors. The savings is probably closer to forty five as a safe estimate. And that's because of insurance and social security and things like that. But we are seeing a significant savings because we're constantly looking at. The uh most efficient way to fund special education um and meet students' needs without breaking the bank. Um. And so that's something that Marsha's brought in. So that's probably the big jump. There's not in the rest of the salaries there. Um, it's not, it's not a large increase considering the number of teachers and you're adding a point four. Um. That's where the the increase would be out of. Out of purchased services, uh, when you look at those, the IEP Direct is the program that we use to store all of the IEPs. It's an online subscription. It's paid for by a grant. Um, the audiological repairs and maintenance has gone up again directly related to an IEP. Um, there's not a choice in that. It's a a service that we have to provide. You can see a tuition outplacement did go down this year uh in this budget. And I always remind you of this. Someone could move in tomorrow and this number could go up two hundred thousand dollars. So as of today, this is what we know. We're budgeting for two out of the district placements. And it's gone down about seventy seven thousand dollars. Here's the real crusher for us. This year is the first year where we have received significant bills. Whether they've been um members of our school community here or never. Um, students have moved in, families have moved into Wellington. Or chosen to send their students to magnet, their children to magnet schools or cho- school choice schools. We are on the hook for their special education costs. You can see the zeros next to that in the prior years. This year, we're spending a lot of money there. Um. And we're looking of how we cover that in the current budget. Right now, we're budgeting a hundred and forty one thousand for a handful of students. Because that's the cost of their services that we know of of today. That means if a student goes to a school choice and they are identified with special education needs. And they need occupational therapists, they need a physical therapist, they need a speech, to work with a speech and language clinician. They have a paraprofessional. All of those costs are built directly back. On top of tuition that we pay for that student and you do not have a choice. You have to pay it. The frustrating thing about this is I say you don't have a lot of control. Marsha attends these PPTs. But there's a a PPT is made up of um a a wide group of of professionals, including their family members. And they all make those recommendations together for what that child needs. You can't come in and just say, no, we're not going to pay for the OT or we're not going to pay for the para. They're making the recommendation. Um, Marsha can ask really hard questions like, doesn't, sounds like everything is going beautiful. Do we really need a a a full-time paraprofessional? She's asking those questions. At this point, though, this is what we know. That's a big, big jump. So Elena, to answer one of your questions, there's savings in other areas. This is one of them that we're getting crushed on next next year. Marsha, do you want to add anything to that? All right, I must be doing all right then. Thank you. Um.
Phil, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So if somebody lives some, they move into Wellington from another town. And they're sending their special needs child to a magnet school. Is there ever a discussion saying? Try showing what our town has to offer that maybe they wouldn't need to go to the special needs magnet school? That that would be something that we could handle adequately in town using the resources that we have. And augmenting them as needed.
So great question. So it's it's something that we've not experienced before. And, you know, we've had some ideas almost around reverse recruiting because a lot of these magnet schools are recruiting. Um. And we feel like we might have to start reverse recruiting so that, you know, look, if if um somebody moves into town. We really need to let them know what our schools have to offer um and the services that we can provide. Sometimes what what their draw is to those schools is the specific theme. And we don't have those specific themes. We're a general um school. So. Yeah, it's definitely something that we may need to do in the future to try and draw people back in. Good question, though. Any other questions of any I've gone through so far? Okay, um. So again, if you go down, you can see the decrease in paraprofessionals. That's the result of shifting to um W E S S. Um. If you look at the behavioral consultant, that's again, we hire some folks through East Con. Um, to come in and work with 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 some of our students that need behavioral support. And that is a a very important piece, a step. Before any student is uh ever outplaced it where there's behavior connected to it. We're using a certified behaviorist to come in and make sure the things that we're implementing. We're trying to um. Impact to keep that child in 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 district if we can. And sometimes it works and we have some real proof of that. And sometimes it doesn't. Um. But it's worth the investment because again, if you can spend thirty thousand dollars for that support and keep a child in district. It's much uh more cost effective than spending a hundred when they go out. And a hundred is a ballpark and it only includes the the tuition. We're not talking about a paraprofessional. We're not talking about transportation. Okay? This is one of the decreases that we um talked about this year and this is a an impact really of of COVID. Um, is the wealth decrease. Um. That's an after school program and we're not looking to eliminate it. We just realized that um we're not sure COVID is going to allow us to break away from. Um, some of our cohorting right now. And we thought it would be better off to use those funds more as a tutoring model. And we also feel like we might actually have staff have a larger increase in doing that because they can do it from anywhere if it's through Zoom. Um. So it's not something that we're 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 looking to eliminate. But when you take out the transportation, when you take out the additional things that we needed to fund that program, we feel like. Um, when we start looked at the seven thousand dollars, if we took ten that ten off, um ten eight. Um, we really felt like we could offer a lot of tutoring hours um to meet student needs. That was the decrease, the reason for the decrease. We left summer school program flat because we're again not sure that's really the specific to IEPs. Um. But we may need to run a separate, a different model that at that point too. And maybe it's not an onsite. We're still discussions around that. Uh, maybe we're sending students to a different district and paying for it. Maybe we're doing Zoom, but we have to keep that number flat because it's connected to. Whether we provide it or somebody else provides it, um, we have to provide the services if it's in their IEP. Evaluations are flat and I'll tell you that uh Marsha does a good job monitoring this and making sure as we do evaluations that we try and stay within our budget. Um, there's some grant offsets to some of these things too, um, but it's flat. You can see the transportation increase that's there. Again, that is directly connected to um an IEP. And then there's no longer and there wasn't a need this year for the IEP nurse either. So. The last item that's on the bottom of that page there is supplies. Uh, it's really limited. Uh, that's a small budget for a school year for supplies for students. Um. And so it's it's we we left that flat and Marsha, I believe, thinks that that's a a fair number to get the items that they need for the year for their students. Questions on the first page? Elena, yeah?
I'm sorry, uh, maybe I missed something, but when you were talking about transportation. Is there is that increase you referred? is there is that increase you referred to M P I or something like this? What is that? So I did not understand. Could you please explain it?
The I I separated two items.
Sorry. So what's that? I did not understand the reason for the increase in transportation. If you could please explain it.
Marcia, you want to speak to that?
So Phil was referring to the I E P, which is an individual education plan. So that is each student's individual plan, which outlines their needs. And what he's referring to is that there's an increased need, you know, in transportation. So this covers students who are outplaced, the transportation for outplacement. And then we also have students who need specialized transportation in district. So that covers both in district and out district placements or transportation.
Okay, thank you.
So on the next page there, and again, I talk about what's contractual and and what's not. I I won't say a lot of the items on the first page are contractual. What I'll say is they're legal. Yeah, definitely heard.
On the, I think that you mentioned the fact that the number of students that we have in special ed is about eighty-five. And the five oh four, I don't know what that number is. I never got a number in that. But you also, you mentioned the fact that the there are more students that are going to depend on the services that we're providing for in special ed. So eighty-five is probably going to go up somewhat.
So what I'm referring to is the students who are transitioning up to hall from center. Our numbers are going to increase at hall. So the numbers will decrease some at center, but are going to increase at hall just because of the fifth graders who are are the fourth graders who are moving up to fifth grade.
Okay.
And I could answer your question about five oh fours. We have thirty students currently.
Thirty?
Wide on five oh fours.
Okay.
And they're not part of this budget. They're not included in the special education budget.
You know, the the overall budget for especially it is, well, with the grants and everything, is two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand. So as Donna asked about the cost per student, it was twenty-two thousand or something like that. But when you factor in the special ed, special ed students is probably around twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand dollars. They have quite an impact because because of the services, you know, that they require.
Correct. That second.
Eighty-five regular and thirty. That's the eighty-five could could change, right? Also, thirty could change. What percentage of our students are we surfacing? About half of them? A third, maybe?
Quarter.
Quarter?
Maybe a little less. Yeah. I mean, if you're looking at four hundred students, you're talking about a fifth, twenty percent.
Yeah.
And?
Ready other questions on the first page?
Anne has her hand raised her.
Was that?
Anne.
Anne?
And you're muted. You can unmute yourself. That was a great thought.
Um, I know you may not be able to do it, but I'm wondering if you could estimate what percent of this budget would come back from the state? I know that's really hard to even estimate, but.
No, it's in there. It's not hard. I'll show you at the end because it's in the excess cost. We factored it in. And we have, we have a pretty tight number around that. So that's on page.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the top of that second page there, the conferences, the travel dues and fees, those are contractual. Copier maintenance, they have a copier in their office because of the confidentiality and they have a telephone in their office. I will, I left the zeros on the equipment. Normally, if there's zeros across the board, I take those out of your budget picture. I left these on very intentionally. And I and when we talk about shared services and trying to be efficient, we have folks that are on staff that do a tremendous job of sharing equipment across multiple districts. If we need something, we ask the question. Someone's got it somewhere. And sometimes we're the person, the 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 school that's, you know, loaning something back. So when we start talking about some of that equipment, we've done, and I say we, it's really Marcia and her team. They've done a great job of sharing equipment. It's like, hey, we need this new thing. And someone's got it. And the next thing you know, they've taken their own personal car there, picked it up and it's at the school and they're cleaning it off, making sure it's going to work for their needs. So they've done a really good job of that. So you can see the total expenditures there. And then the what Anne was speaking about was the excess cost grant is a portion of this. And the excess cost grant is, what happens is you take that cost per student and once it's over, it's over your, and I'm going to say this, Marcia, four and a half times your per pupil expenditure. That's when you start to get reimbursement back. Okay? So if our per pupil was twenty thousand dollars, four and a half times, we'd have to spend ninety thousand dollars on a student before. And anything above that ninety thousand, we would start to get between seventy and seventy-five percent back in excess cost. Marcia and I and team, we sat down. Marcia's gone through the I E Ps. And we, this is the most we've ever put in to offset a budget expecting excess cost to come back. And the reason why is we're we're pretty confident that these students' programs, where they are, what their I E P demands, there's not going to be significant change over the next year. Because of that, and we know the cost, their estimated cost of their program, we can say how much money we're going to get back. So of my example, if that student cost a hundred thousand dollars, we would only get, we would only get to access around that ten thousand dollars. We'd get about seven, seven thousand dollars of that ten thousand. That's above the ninety thousand, if that makes sense. That's how excess cost is factored. So you have to figure if we're getting a hundred and twenty-one thousand back, we have a few students that have some significant needs and there's costs associated with them and transportation is part of this that we're getting money back. So again, a higher example, if one student had needs that cost us two hundred thousand dollars, it would be anything over that ninety thousand dollars, it would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars would be eligible for excess cost. And typically, we get between seventy and seventy-five percent of that amount back. That's where, why we offset the budget. The ironic thing about this is the statute says fully funded. Never happens. All districts get between seventy and seventy-five percent. It's one of the issues they're currently looking at saying you need to fully fund special education or identify a way for districts, especially small districts, to control costs. Because again, someone could move in tomorrow and if they have a residential outplacement setting, Marcia is, I mean, a quarter of a million dollars, right? I mean, we could be looking at something that high. So that's where the excess cost comes out. The I D A certified is part of a grant that Marcia and team writes. The preschool certified is part of the I D A grant. The I D A classified is a paraprofessional, part of a grant. And the purchase services is again, part of a grant. That's what brings the special education budget down to about a forty-six thousand dollar increase. And remember, that's about the cost, could be about the cost of a point four addition. Okay? Any questions about the special ed program? Hold on, Herb. I'm sorry, I muted you. I think you're you're echoing Herb, so I'm sorry. Hold on, you can unmute yourself. Let's see if I can do it for you. Herb, you're still muted. There you go. Perfect.
The behavioral consultant is in for about thirty-five thousand dollars. That's not a permanent member of us to have, but only as needed. How much do they get an hour when they come in today?
Their hourly rate is pretty high and it's basically you're hiring a doctor. Marcia, do you want to speak to their cost?
Yeah, so we hire our board certified behavior analysis, the B C B As through Eastcon. And we've worked with them for years. They have a wonderful program. The the exact cost, it's about, um, but I just out of memory, looking at something that recently came through, it's about five hundred dollars for a half day of service. So they are very, very good at working with us to, you know, cut down the cost as much as possible. We work with them to identify the specific needs and how much time it would take to meet those needs for each student. And that's clearly identified in the student's I E P to make sure that we are putting the time that we need, but not going over that time. They come in as consultants. They meet with the child's team. They do observations of the child. They assist and write the behavior intervention plan. They have trained the paras, so the paras can be working. It's been wonderful, actually, working on the student's plan and collecting data that's reviewed at those consultation meetings on a weekly basis. We've also provide some parent support with the B C B As to ensuring that the parents fully understand what the student's behavioral support is at school and also helping them to understand, for example, like common language, so they can carry over some of that common language at home. So we're really getting quite a bit of service, you know, for the the money that we're spending. It would be more costly if we did hire an independent person to come in and work.
Who makes determination as to whether they come in or not? Do you do that or is a result of the I E P?
I'm sorry, missed the beginning of your question.
Who determines whether we'll use their services? Do you determine that? Or is the I P P S that does that?
Yeah, it's in the I E P. So the planning and placement team would make that recommendation, which includes the parent and the child's education team. And that is typically, that recommendation is typically made after we have made attempts with the school counselors and the educational team in district to implement a behavior plan. And usually that behavior plan, we need to, you know, it may not be successful. So we bring in the B C B As who have more knowledge and capabilities to help the team.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else out there has a question, a comment on special ed? Okay, if not, remember next time we can come back to that if you think of something that you want put on the table. Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
May I? I just wanted to be able to answer a question that came at previous meeting. I don't want to leave that unanswered. It was a question about counseling services and how many students are seeing, being seen. And I just wanted to answer that question. We do have sixty-seven students who are receiving counseling services in district.
Did you say sixty-seven or fifty-seven?
Sixty-seven.
Thank you.
Is that on a weekly basis or?
Those are students that are, they may be on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, but they are students who are receiving regularly scheduled sessions. And that time could consist of anywhere from fifteen minutes a week to an hour a week. But I think it's important to note that it's not just the time that the counselors are spending with those students because there's other additional supports that are provided to those students outside of the counseling time, which would consist of, you know, preparation for those counseling services, communication with the teams, consultants with the teams and communication with the the families. So, you know, I don't want to say just that those sixty-seven students are seen for, you know, for example, a half an hour a week. And and that's it because of a lot more that goes into supporting students who receive counseling than just that time.
Are they pulled out of class for that or do they do that during their free time if they have any?
It is scheduled, yes, scheduled to the best of the ability. So they are not missing their content classes.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Phil, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, if not, we'll move along.
Thanks, Marcia.
Thank you, Marcia. We'll move on to program five on our agenda, which is the health services.
Yeah, this is a, this is a pretty quick program. So this is our our school nurses. And so basically, to run your health services program, you have to have nurses in your schools. Donna mentioned earlier, where would you look to, and Herb, sorry, I'm going to mute you again, so I don't get that echo. Where would you see the, if you move to a pre-K through A three building, where would you see savings? This is one of those areas. You don't need two school nurses if you have one building. And so we have one in each building. You can see their salaries are there. They have listened of all years that I can brag about our nurses. This has been probably the hardest year of their careers because of COVID. And the amount of, you know, when I'm contact tracing and I will tell you, last Sunday, I was here all day long, contact tracing, and the nurses are right there with me. They're helping making phone calls, too. They're calling staff members, you know, past their hours. They're they're doing all of these things. So they've just been a real significant impact this year as far as just what they've done to help us get through COVID. And I greatly appreciate that. They have some money in their contract for conferences. So it's in there. The medical advisor, because we have nurses, we have to have a doctor that's associated. This is the fee. It's been a flat fee each year. This year, we've had a lot of use of that medical advisor. If we have questions, that's who our nurses call. And the doctor has to prescribe orders at the beginning of the year, and that's what the nurses implement. If there's any changes to those orders, it has to come from the doctor. It can't come from nurses. So you have to have the medical advisor. There's some money in there that we keep. We've been at a good level and we monitor each year what we've used. And it's it's come out right around that number. So we've kept it flat for a few years now. The medical supplies, we kept flat as well. And, you know, you're talking about ibuprofen, you're talking about Band-Aids and, you know, any alcohol wipes, any of those items. Now, now in here for them is, could be masks, could be a ninety-five masks and gowns and gloves. But they have a decent stockpile right now because we just weren't sure how much they were going to need. Anytime someone comes into the office, either office, right now, our protocol, someone calls from a classroom and says, hey, I'm sending this child up to the nurse's office. They don't look good. They're complaining. They have a sore throat. Our now, our nurses are getting into full gear. So they have a face shield, they have a mask on, they have gloves, they have a gown. A student goes right into the isolation isolation room so we can protect our staff. We are required to provide those things. And so, you know, that's part of what's in the medical supplies. The audiometers in there from years, it'll be the last year, you'll see it. It won't be aligned in the budget next year. We don't need it. It was a replacement. And then the membership, it's like so they could be a members of the National School Nurse Association and and get those periodicals. So really, the only increase here you see is salaries contractual. But they've just been an integral part of of our operations this year. And to be quite honest with you, every time what we call each other, it's, we're always getting a little nervous because it's like, okay, what what, who we contact tracing for now, but they've just been great. So any questions about the health services program? All right.
I don't have any questions.
It's pretty straightforward.
Move on to the next item?
Yes. Program six is curriculum and staff development. And the, this is really where if if you want to see academic growth, and I know that's a priority for you, and you, we want to see changes in the curriculum and improving curriculum and that that curriculum group or your curriculum committee is very aware. In a proven curriculum and that that curriculum group or your curriculum committee is very aware of the dollars tied to this. This is so our people are current, they're heading to conferences, so we can train our people on on new curriculum as it's rolling out. But we can hire subs, so that's what makes up all of this. Some of this is material too. Support for curriculum leadership might be, hey, we need, you know, the latest science is showing that. Students need more training around phonemic awareness. And this is the item that we need to do that. And we might be purchasing a book for each staff member. For at a grade level or for a school, depending on what the concept is. So that's where support for curriculum leadership is, it's been flat. The team leader stipends is. It that is really important from the standpoint of, you know, it's, this is our leaders in curriculum, it's our leaders for team leaders. They're the ones that are taking the lead to to. To make sure that all of our teachers have what they need. There's curriculum chair people. They don't get much money, but they're responsible for, you know, impacting all of the science teachers or all of the the ELA teachers or all the math teachers. Outside conferences is contractual. We actually don't budget enough money there each year compared to what's in the contract. But that's because it usually never all gets used. So we're actually under budget for that intentionally because we we watch how much is used. And we have never crossed where everyone has gone to something, especially right now with COVID. A lot of things are actually being offered free, which is nice, but I wouldn't feel comfortable lowering that number because. It's contractual. If everybody did go, we would not nearly have enough money there. You can see the workshops in-house, that's if we bring somebody in or we want to hire subs and we we, you know, have a half-day program. You know, we've brought people in for all sorts of reasons. Well, right now we have a contract with Eastcon around the Readers and Writers Workshop. That individual is actually coming into model lessons and meeting with teams, so that would be an example of of in-house workshops. The, again, contractual paraprofessional workshops is in the budget. We keep that flat, it's a contractual number. It's not enough, but we don't go over it because not everybody uses it, even as as much as we encourage it. And then there's money for professional development committees, as, you know, we're already planning for next year. As an administrative team, and then what we end up doing is we pull together a group of teachers and get feedback from team leaders. About professional development that's needed in the future. And this professional development committee can use, you know, make recommendations about how to use this money. We really need a speaker and training on X, Y, and Z. That's what these funds are used for. And then the materials to support learning, some of those workshop materials are really specific, so when you bring someone in. Sometimes they'll say, hey, every single person needs this type of notebook, this is the way we do our program. Or, you know, everybody needs this workbook to to be able to access this training, and that's what those funds are there for. The expenditures are exactly the same, we kept everything flat. The only thing that's different is we applied, we got more money, so we applied the full grant, why not, right? So we applied the full $12,709. To the grant and this this program is lower than it was last year because of it. Questions about this program and Herb, I'm sorry, I muted you again. So if you want to talk, you gotta unmute. Any questions for program six? Oh, you're muted, Herb. You're muted still. Herb, you're still muted. There we go, perfect.
Like our in development of the curriculum and things like that, any money in there for our website or. Keeping material current on our website? Because I know when I check, I, it looks like it's not. Up to date. We don't have someone that's. Doing that all the time, I guess, or.
That's one thing that we talked about as a committee and and committee members can chime in here if you want. One of the things we talked about was as as there's a push and we have a push coming, I'm going to be honest with you, the committee knows this. For all curriculum over the next couple of years to be approved or reviewed by the board. And our goal is, as it's approved, to put it on the website, so something that our our families can see, our teachers have access to it anyways. But they can see it, that people know what we're doing, because some of the stuff that's there is just outdated and it's not current practice that's in place. So that's why we need to, you know, have the curriculum come to the Board of Ed for approval. Now that provisions have been made and then posted to the website, but yes, that's definitely got to be part of the plan. There's not really dollars tied to it, but we do pay one of our secretaries, a portion of her salary is district. And that is the for website and work.
Okay, so that's down the road really for us and it'll be coming up.
Correct.
Okay. Any board member have a comment?
I have a question. Um, have have teachers requested additional outside professional development such as the line? Hang on, let me make sure I can see the both at the same time, the teacher workshops in-house, have they requested? You've been able to provide, is that kind of an area where you have to set priorities? And from what the priorities are, there just hasn't been a big demand for it.
I will tell you that one of the things we we, anybody, it doesn't matter who we hire in district. Whether it's a teacher or a custodian, a paraprofessional, it'd be a secretary. When they come through my office, they're going to hear me. It's one of my questions that I, when I interview people. Is what do you need for professional development? And everybody needs professional development. What would you be interested in going to? And that's constant, Michelle. So I will say between grants and to be quite honest with you. I've given my professional development money to make sure someone else can go to something. And sometimes. There's, there's, you know. A teacher needs specific professional development because of students in their class. And we make sure they get it. So our funds right now meet those needs. This doesn't mean people aren't going to California or, you know, flying and they have $400 or something like that in their contract, the teacher's contract. They're going to things around us and there's a lot of offerings. This is one of the perks of of, you know, there are some pros of this COVID time is that people are sharing. And we're getting more access to free workshops than we've ever had before. Which is great this year. But at some point, people are going to continue to charge and but there's, there's, they get to go to, we make sure we find a way to get what people need. Even if it's above their their budget allotment, that's in their contract.
But you're entirely correct about the the free workshops this year. Many places are just doing that to keep their trainers on staff and they're using some of the PPP loans to pay those trainers. So they're able to provide it for free. That's not going to last into next year. So for next year, that's. Something that will be coming to an end, I'm sure by July 1. I'm concerned about this because I feel it's an area we've consistently underspent on. Not because I think we have to be sending people to California, but just in terms of the amount of the amount of professional development per person in the building. Is way below the average district and maybe that's because we share and we're, you know, we hire really good people and they do book groups on the side for expensive costs. You know, price not necessarily always cater to high-quality professional development, I understand that. But it is an area we have consistently underspent on and I just want to make sure it's not. There are needs going unmet.
So I will tell you is. When we met with a curriculum committee, one of the things they asked me to do is to look at. What would it cost? Because when you roll out new curriculum, you need to provide training on it and you need to make sure teachers have input. And when you start, during the school year, that's very hard to do. You either have to have consistent subs to make sure it happens, so it's not canceled, because that's really frustrating to teachers. You have to do it often enough that it's a new unit and it's fresh, otherwise it's overwhelming. And we've talked about doing this in the summertime. And when I started looking at, you know, listen, it's, so I'll give you an example, if we brought in three first-grade teachers. And we brought in our our math, the person that gets the math stipend. For the day. That those five people, it's going to cost $1,000 for that day if they're there for a full day. We have a plan for that. So I will tell you that these funds, especially next year. Are really critical because that's part of the goal of the curriculum committee. Is to make sure that the teachers get the training they need. And that's probably been the the most challenging piece. When we have consistent subs. And we can do in-house and there's, there's, it's so dynamic, because you can go watch someone teach in a classroom. You can leave, the subs take back over, they go into, you know, they go into a conference for those three teachers. And and the, you know, the the principal and the the curriculum chair, that has that stipend position are all back in conversation about what they learned. The reviewing that practice together, that's how you implement curriculum well. And that's one thing that we've struggled with because of inconsistent subs. I think our, we've learned that our work, making our pool stronger, we've learned some strategies that are working. And I hope to continue that because we know as we roll out curriculum and you're going to start to see. Some curriculum coming your way pretty shortly, that needs to be approved and then we need to provide the training for it. So we're going to use these dollars, Michelle. And, you know, all I can say is based upon our calculations, it's going to be enough. It won't. It might not be, you know, it'll be close. But I think from the standpoint of it's one of those things that you you do and then we do it in the most cost-effective way. I don't believe that the most cost-effective way is to bring every teacher in over the summer because it costs a lot of money. If I can do it during the school year on a more consistent basis, and I'll give you the example. I could do this during the school day and pay for three substitute teachers and it could cost $360 for the day. Versus a thousand in the summer. And the reason why is that's the cost of the subs. The drawback, I'm, yes, I'm pulling that teacher out of that that student's classroom, but I'm strengthening that teacher's practice. And so that's, that's kind of the the route I hope to go, but we need consistent subs to do that. I hope I answered your question. Herb, you muted yourself again. You were unmuted. There you go.
Okay, let's move on to utilities and.
Absolutely.
Program seven.
So program seven utilities, we pull out the cost of of water, power, heating and and we have the the performance contract in here. So there's, when we talk about constantly looking for savings, this is one of those areas. Last year. We were in a position where fuel was extremely low. And we were able, we weren't, students weren't in the buildings. And what we ended up doing was when we were negotiating with around our fuel, and I'm going to start heating oil because. It's it's an example of what I'm talking about. We were negotiating with them because the students, we weren't heating the building as much and we weren't going to use our minimum amount. And they gave us the a a chunk of money back and last year's budget came back from this. But prices were also significantly lower at the time. And so we negotiated with them and this is why heating prices are so low here. We negotiated that $1.63 last year in like May. We locked that in in May of last year, knowing we were going to see the savings this year. They allowed us to extend that price. So when you see that 214. That we're paying this year. We, it was pushed out, so or for 2020, it's it was pushed out. And I think that actually is a year off. No, it's right, 2122. So it, there's significant savings there. And that heating oil and the diesel fuel is is pretty much the same, it's not exactly the same cost, but it's it's about the same. The water, the difference between center and hall. Is is actually because one is on the public water and one's on the, one's not, and the delivery is different. So there's a different cost between the two, why their water rates are different. We have brought that number down because of, again, we look at our water usage. And even though we were not in the buildings, we still factored in how much water average we use per year and what it was going to cost. And then we had a savings in electricity. And this is a multi-year contract. It'll be effective January 22. So the first six months of your contract is at the the different rate and the next six months is lower. So there's, again, there's savings there. And we constantly are looking at these things. If we can lock in these rates, we we do. If you were to do this on a flex and you pay the current. There are places that have tried that and they just pay through the roof. I mean, they just, it's, they they get burned. The other thing that we we looked at doing was trying to contract with multiple towns and. The year that we decided to step out, the group that was was doing it together paid like 40 cents more in oil than we did. So just because you're in larger numbers in this situation doesn't mean you're going to get a better deal. So we've done pretty well here. The one frustrating thing, and I say this every year, is this this performance contract lease payment. This is in year eight, this will be year eight of 17 that we're paying for. There was all sorts of projects that were done here, the spray foam, some of the ceiling, the ceiling of doors, so air is not coming in. There was, what else was done? The lighting, but now LED is even better than what they put in. But it was budgeted, it was paid for by the savings over these years, and this is supposed to be paid for by the savings? I don't know if it's covered, but you have to budget for it because it's a lease you have to pay. And unfortunately, you have to pay. For nine more years, so that's significant. Questions about anything in this program?
If not, let's move along to the next item.
All right. Program 10. Probably one of the more frustrating programs, to be honest with you, because of the timing of this. We've tried to get them to negotiate quicker, but this fringe benefits and is and subs. Is several items and the insurance is the biggest obviously. So this is where we budget for our substitute teachers. Last year, you decided, because I I encouraged you to put in some money for a long-term sub. And it was, we started at 30,000 and I think you came down to 20. You're going to use that whole 20 this year. And so I'm glad that money is there because now we don't have a $20,000 shortfall that we couldn't cover. So I think that is a fair amount, it's a good amount based upon the number of days. You've got to figure, you know, it's about $250 a day to pay a long-term sub. About. And so it's, you know, that gets eaten up pretty quickly. There's funding in there for the substitute for for paraprofessionals and that's where you see the salary cost. The biggie here is the insurance. And so if you remember, so if you look at 1920. What we was adjusted, you can see the number there and that's when when we budgeted, it was really high. So the approved in 2021, we were, we were able to stay flat and it was actually lower. And the reason why is because the year prior to that is when we had budgeted for a 15% increase, because that's what we knew at the time. Even when the budget was passed, we were still at a 15% increase. So, but when the, it finally came down to after putting it out to bid and getting the numbers back, it came in significantly lower. And so there was, there was additional money in the budget that was for insurance that wasn't necessarily needed. And this is one of the struggles of of the timing of how insurance happens and on their annual clock. Right now. The medical insurance is at 7%. Which means it won't be higher than 7%. They look at, they look at a lot of things, but they do a presentation for us and they really look at our usage over the last 12 months. And our usage right now is looking good. And so what I did was in the bottom, I I wanted to let you know that if during this process, before you approve it. And you can give me the the information, I think it's the right thing. Um, and you can give me the, the information, I, and I think it's the right thing to do, to be honest with you. If you were to prove your budget and it was still at seven percent and it went to the board of finance and it was prior to. The number being set that was going to go to the town for a vote. If we found out that it dropped to two percent, I think it's the prudent thing to do to tell the board of finance that. And to say, hey, it's at two percent, you, I, I believe you should drop the board of education budget, um, by this amount. Because that's what we need. Um, we just don't know that number and, uh, Elena, you can unmute yourself. We just won't know until that's time. I know we're going out to bid. I know we'll have a better idea towards the end of February, but it takes time for them to get those numbers and then they're on their timeline. Elena has her hand raised, Herb. Go ahead, Elena.
Thank you. Uh, so I, could you, could you for the next meeting, maybe you can give us the exact numbers? For nineteen twenty, how much it increased, the insurance increased, because you said significantly less than fifteen. But how, how many percent exactly it increased? And maybe the year before, like last three years, like eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one? So we could have a better understanding of what we could expect.
Yeah, the, I ca- I can give you the, what we budgeted, what passed, I think. I can get this from Donna. I think I can give you what was budgeted, the increase we thought it was going to be, and then what the actual turned out to be. I believe I can get that from Donna. What I have to be co- and I'm not sure where you're, if you're going to a- think about averaging over the years. The thing we have to be careful was of, is usage. At that time, the reason we were at fifteen percent for so long, it's because our usage was high. If you have a staff member, someone that's taking insurance, that is on, uh, extremely expensive cancer treatments. Your usage goes up, your cost goes up, and they look at loss ratios. If you have two, three, four, five people in a small pool that are up, your rates are not going to come in very low. Because they're, it's a business, right? So, but I can try and give you, if that's what you're looking for each year was what we budgeted for. And I know, I believe what we bu- ended up budgeting for, for nineteen twenty was fifteen percent. And I, I want to say it came in at two. The final, after going out to bid and us arguing about it, I think it came in at two percent, Elena, that year, but I can, um. I can, I'll confirm that for you, and I think we left whatever the increase was from last year. Um, cut, was covered by that difference. So, but I will get you the, that's what you're looking for, right? What we actually budgeted and what the actual increase was.
Even not what we budgeted, but what was the actual increase, like, to like around two percent for nineteen twenty, how about last, this year, twenty twenty-one? Do you know what the actual increase was?
I don't.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I don't, yeah, I don't off the top of my head. I can get, I can definitely get that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if you, again, uh, these numbers, the, the, you know, there's a cap on some of these of what the, what to go off at. Um, so the dental insurance is there, you can see it's lower. Um, at this point in time, the life insurance is flat, it's, that's a more of a contractual item. Um, based upon, it's not like the rates go up and down a ton there, it's just based upon, they get the benefit. Um, there's unemployment compensation that's in there. We're, we're fighting a lot of unemployment right now. And the reason I say that is, and I'm going to just give you an example, is that if someone came and subs for us for four days. Um, and it's within the unemployment window, they can file for unemployment from Wellington. Um, and so we, we, we challenge some of those, which actually, I'm going to be honest, we challenge all of them. Um, and if you win, uh, you, you don't need to pay that, that, that funding. And, and it might not seem like, seem like a mo- a lot, a big amount. We could be talking about fifty dollars total for some of these. But those items add up. And so right now, we're, we're fighting some of those. If there's something where we, you know, we had to, for whatever reason, somebody, we had to lay somebody off at some point in time. That's not something you would fight or win. Um, because you would, they were an employee and then now they're not, you'd have to pay your, their unemployment. So. Uh, but that's Donna and I both feel like that's a fair number, which is why we left it flat. The workers' comp came down, um, a little bit. Um, and then the next, the social security Medicare came up. When I mentioned the paraprofessional piece earlier, that there's an added cost to having them in the union, you see some of that here. And this is where it related to get to your question earlier about, you know, what's the actual increase? The number that we budgeted for twenty twenty-one, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ended up being understated. We don't have enough money in that specific line for this current year. Um, and it's, it'll end up being covered out of something else in this program, I believe. Um, but those are the things that, as, it went, after a budget happens. And, you know, people move into positions or out of positions, if that number goes up or down. There's has to be an adjustment made. So right now, it's understated, there's not enough money in there. And there's also the increase, and that's, uh, the change for a couple more people to go to the W E S S union. So that's why it went up to one seventy-six. So when I say it's not a sixty thousand dollar savings for pairs, it's more like forty-five. That's the reason why, because you have an added cost in this area. I hope that makes sense. Contractually, we have to, um, have a tuition reimbursement. If anybody applies for it, there's a survey, if they apply for it, we have to pay a portion. It's only for beyond master's degree. All right, and it's not their entire class, it's like up to eight hundred dollars a year. Um, so that's in there. Um, and then there's a tax shelter annuity, um, part of that's my contract, part of that's, uh, the, um. Classified staff, the W E S S union, that's contractual. Um, and again, more W E S S members, and that's again, why I say about fifty thousand dollars less than sixty. So you can see that the total there at this point is, um, one point six million. Um, and it's up about a hundred thousand dollars. If we see. And I really do want to hear the board's thoughts on this, um, because this, you may pass a budget before. Um, we have our rates in. I'm glad we're at seven percent right now, I'd rather be at zero. But if we, if it gets lowered to five, or it gets lowered to two, or if it gets lowered to zero. Uh, because our, right now, our, our pool looks good. Do you want to recommend, um, or, or have me share that with the board of finance? I think it gives goodwill, I think it gives good, it gives honesty, um, to say, look, we're asking you what we need. And so if we said you could reduce our budget by fifty thousand dollars because our insurance dropped. I believe that's the right thing to do. I can only give you the recommendation, I can't tell you what to do. Questions on fringe and, and you can unmute yourself.
Anne?
So if we, if we did do that and we had been told to cut our budget. Would that count toward the amount we, we were told to cut?
That'd be up to them.
Okay.
I mean, if, if they said, cut your budget fifty thousand dollars, and we still didn't have the, the, that number yet, and then it came in fifty thousand dollars lower. That's, that would cover the cost.
Okay, because I think that's fair, you know, if we are being asked to cut.
The only problem is, Anne, we might not know. Again, this is the struggle, the timing of some of these things. It's, it's, you know. You don't know, and so sometimes we don't know until May.
Mm-hmm.
That's when the vote is. But it comes down some, it, because we constantly are negotiating. And if it comes down from seven to four and a half, eight, it's not going to be higher than four and a half. I think that's important to report, again, to say. You should lower, we're okay with, you know, the, I would recommend you rec- tell the, allow me to tell the board of finance. Look, you know, we're down thirty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we don't have to decide that tonight, but we, we can address that down the road. Sounds like a good idea. Are there any other questions or comments?
Tracy has her hand up.
I forgot I had done you.
Uh, Stacy, go ahead.
Um, just a couple of questions. First of all, Phil, can you, um. Remind me and maybe for Laura, because she's not aware, or new to the board this year. Um, what a percentage increase in the budget is, is it eighty thousand dollars?
No, one percent will be in this budget is closer to ninety.
Ninety, okay, just, just because I like to keep that back in my head.
Correct.
Um. And the second thing was, I, I agree with you and Rayanne said about. You know, only asking for what we need, except that I seem to remember, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, that. The insurance rates when we went, when the budget went to referendum were expected to be much higher. And then the budget passed with those higher rates and we didn't need them because the insurance rate went down. But our, had increased cost in special ed or somewhere else where we needed that money. And it helped us to have that buffer, so we didn't have to go back and ask for more. Am I recalling that correctly?
No, and then that's always the, the intent here is, right, is, is so. You, you know, when you present, and I, I fully believe in this. I try and present the budget of need. There's nothing flashy in this budget. Um, and I think it's important, just like last year. Look, we returned over four hundred thousand dollars. Let me tell you, I could have done some, some serious spending in this district. And, and done some, some, you know, made some, some heavy duty recommendations. Um, but I didn't. You know, I recommended Chromebooks because it was a, a, a need at that time, it was something we needed. Um, but beyond that, it was honesty, and I think it was, it was returned back. When they said, we're going to give you the money back to your non-lapsing fund account. And that's where that money sits now. I mean, they, they pulled a hundred and eighty thousand, I think it was. Um, to put back into that account. That's the type of relationship I think that's important with the board of finance. Um, if the date, Tracy, that they don't, when we have need and we don't have money for it. And we go and ask and it's not approved. Is the day that trust is broken, but that doesn't exist right now, and I think that's really important. Um, and that's why I make the recommendation. Um, again, I don't recommending lowering it until we know. Until we know that rate is lower. If it stays at seven, that's the number that should be in the budget.
Yeah, and I agree that we should get, you know, we shouldn't ask for more than we need. I just want it us to all keep in the back of our heads too, that sometimes those. Those, uh, places where we have more money put in. And then things go in our favor after the budget referendum goes through have been beneficial to us.
Yeah, you're doing a budget in January. That's, you know, months out, uh, and you're making, this is a, you know, calculated estimate is what this is. And we've made, we're making a calculated estimate on the number of people that need insurance as of today, this is what we know. Um, we're making a calculated, calculated estimate on salary. If three people leave to go to a different district, we could hire, hi- hire someone at a, a higher salary. Or at a lower salary. So again, we're making calculated estimates about what we need for next year.
And Tracy, I think your point about, um, it's, it goes in our favor is that sometimes it's gone in our favor. And there have been other years where maybe the healthcare stayed the same, but something else went very much the opposite direction, not in our favor. So, um, that hasn't been in recent years, but, um, the budgets definitely have gone up and down dramatically. In occasion, on occasion over the years.
Yeah, and that's what we've, I, I think, you know, the oil tank, right? I think we've paid for some things that, you know, we've said, hey, we are going to cover this cost and here's why. Um, we can cover this because of the insurance and, and again, this is why I think it's, it's important to be an open book and be upfront with people. Because I'm not hiding anything. You can pick through any of these items in the budget, I can defend that. Um, and I've, I've always been clear, like, right now, if we have a, a significant savings. When I present to you the monthly budget update, I tell you, hey, we are sixty thousand dollars, uh, right now. In, in the black in, uh, you know, fringe benefits, or we're a hundred thousand dollars in the hole in special ed. I let you know those things, and, uh, that I think is why it's important to do those things along the way. So they're, um, they're understanding where the budget's at and fine. All valid points. Herb, you're muted.
That's the last item on our agenda. Anything else anyone wants to say at this time before we adjourn? We do have a meeting, I believe, on February second, Phil, uh.
Yes, you are correct. Okay, so.
At that time, at that time, we'll review the entire budget and.
Herb, let's talk about that. Um, that's the final programs of the, uh, for the budget. But we're going to have a snowstorm, folks, I think. Um, that they're talking about Monday into Tuesday. So I think we, you know, there may be a, a chance that you have to be flexible here because. They're talking about winds, it's still too early to tell, I don't know what's going to happen. But I will tell you that our reports that we're getting into, uh, my office. They're saying that we're going to get some significant winds and some significant snow. It's still early, but if that does happen, this is Monday, Tuesday, and we have twenty inches of ground and, uh, snow on the ground and people don't have power. You may, cause, we may consider just rescheduling that, but I, I think. Yeah. But those programs that night, Herb. Are, um, that's the last night, it's program eight and nine. Um, and, you know, you can have some discussion afterwards and see where you're at. Um, the Tuesday, February ninth is only if you need it.
A special request, if we do have to cancel that meeting, to also text our phones, we may not have access to the internet.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and the other?
Michelle, we'll have to postpone it for sure, you know, if it's a bad snow.
Donna had to say, wanted to say something, I think, Herb.
Donna?
The other thing is, if we have to cancel the second. Since we already have the ninth scheduled, is it, I don't know how long it takes to go through those programs, but is it feasible? To just do it on the ninth, instead of trying to squeeze another meeting in between the second and the ninth? Would that be a reasonable approach?
Well, I think, I think we have a meeting already scheduled. For the ninth at six o'clock. We would meet at six o'clock and then a regular board meeting would be at. Seven thirty.
Right, so in, what I'm suggesting is if the second has to be canceled.
Right.
I, if the time already scheduled on the ninth is adequate for us to do what we need to do. To just do it then, instead of trying to schedule another meeting between those two. But I don't know if that's enough time.
Yeah, the only issue I see, Donna, and I think that's a good idea, the only issue I see is. I believe that's the night that, February ninth, that your regular board meeting is when you're e- expected to vote on the budget. Because I have to present to the board of finance.
Okay, so it might not be enough time then.
So if you're not, uh, right, i- i- you might end up having to have a meeting, a special meeting after that, if that is delayed, if you. Uh, again, I don't know where anyone's at, I don't know, you know, you're looking for more money, less money, i- i- you know. You can figure that out, but, you know, it may just be that you say, hey, we went through program eight and nine, the budget looks really good. Um, and I say, thank you very much, and you approve it, and that's what, what's presented, but that's up to you.
Yeah, it all depends on which way the board goes. We won't know until we, we get there. I think we, we have a meeting scheduled for the sixteenth, too, in a way. I wouldn't think we'd have to go that far, but.
No, you don't. Nothing on the sixteen. No, and I guess to Donna's point, maybe what you could do is. You think, i- if we have bad weather on the second and you have to cancel, we just post it so that you do it on the ninth. You only have an hour. Um, and if you don't get through it and you can't vote at your regular meeting. Then you'd have to have a special meeting at some point, early enough to give me enough time to make changes. Um, and then to come back.
Right.
When, when do you need everything finalized by Phil?
So I present, and I'm just looking at, I present to the board of finance on the twenty-fifth of February. They've actually asked for all of our budgets a week in advance, which means the eighteenth, um, if we meet that. Um, so they want, they have requested that the budget is in their hands for review, um, by February eighteenth.
But you said, Phil, you wanted us to vote on that budget, the ninth, night of the ninth, so you'd have it ready to present?
Only if you're prepared to do that. I just, I just. Only if you're prepared to do that. I just, I wanna make sure you understand that if you don't get through it. On the ninth, and you can't vote on it. You have to make sure you have enough direct, given me enough direction so that we can have an additional meeting to make adjustments at that meeting. Cuz otherwise, if you have an additional meeting to tell me at that point what the adjustments are, you have to have two more meetings, if that makes sense.
So should we just put a tentative for the fourth? In case you have to cancel on the second, so that there's enough time?
I don't see any on my calendar. I think I would wanna make sure to check the town calendar. But I I, that's up to the board, if if you wanna make sure we have a a a second night, just in case.
Well, the February fourth, then.
Would that work for everybody on the board if the second is canceled?
We can always hold it in our calendars and not commit to it, because we still have to notice the meeting ahead anytime anyway, so we need a little time to do that. So we don't have to finalize the 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 uh, because we don't know if we're gonna have to cancel or not yet.
Right, I just figured if we, if Phil can't, has to cancel it, then he knows to notice the. One on the fourth, but only if everybody would be able to make it.
Yeah, we don't have to post the fourth. We, as Michelle says, we'll just hold it open. If everyone's willing to ho- hold it open. In case we have to do that. We could do that.
Yeah, I think that Donna's question, can everyone, is there anyone that cannot make the fourth if it's needed? So that's then the assumption is everybody can make the fourth. If we cancel on the second, then the makeup would be the fourth, is that's what's. And I would have to post that on the third, and I'd have to do that by six, by two o'clock. Um, on the third. So we'll know, you know, just if you, as long as you hold that in your calendar, that. Uh, six P M on uh February fourth, just in case. Um, we have to cancel on the second, who knows what this storm will bring. Maybe we'll only get a couple inches and we can get it in.
And we can post the agenda on the third, right?
Correct.
By noon, Phil, so that's, so that's okay.
Yeah, I'll just repost it. I'll just can't, I'll use the same exact agenda. But I'll have to change the link for the Zoom, so that's clear. But I'll just, I'll, cuz we're gonna po- post the agenda for the the next meeting um tomorrow, if we haven't done that already, maybe we already did that, I have to look. Um, and then if we just have to reuse it, we'll reuse the same agenda.
Okay, and if we're able to settle it there, we can cancel the budget meeting on the on the ninth.
Correct. And then we just have a regular board meeting at seven.
And on the fourth, if it does happen, it'll be around six o'clock. Is that okay?
Works for me. I see a lot of head nodding. And they're not falling asleep, they're saying yes.
Okay, anything else with a good order? If not, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. And you're a sec?
Anne seconded, there we go.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed, abstentions. Okay, good night, everyone, stay healthy.